Once it's turned over to somebody who's going to build the house, we really have no last thing. They may want a bigger lawn, maybe a pool in the future. But in any case, any work within that 100 foot buffer would have to be filed with the conservation.
Well, so you know, I think ultimately what he's asking for is for the applicant to file first. It does strike me, I mean, there is an N-Rat here.
Yeah, I think they probably don't recall, because we did it a year and a half ago. So whether you recall, we walked it and did it.
Did you make sure that gets a copy of that?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, you definitely have to copy author, I'll remind them that there is an N-Rat on file.
And Ian, Ian could have pulled it off.
Actually, the whole commission, the whole commission did it, yep.
Okay. Yeah, and then, I mean, other than that, do you anticipate there being concern about beating that out of the federal?
No, we do, we do, we already need it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. We've got the other one, yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's anything on that list, because we went down it one by one by one, yeah.
So I mean, ultimately, what Fupp is asking for is, you know, concerns to what the resource is there. I mean, again, it's up to you guys, you could certainly condition it in any way you fashion. But that's ultimately what is concerned is there.
Well, I mean, the-
So again, I mean, I know the applicant saying that they would like to traverse into certain buffers. It is special permits, it has talked about natural resources if you wanted to, and it's even if it's the 50 foot buffer. Certainly, well, they have the right to do so. Ultimately, the board to adequately determine that.
Yeah, so the 25, we can't, we can't go to 25 no matter what, that's in the law.
And it's very well defined where the wetlands are, it jumps up on the street feet. And is like a perfect 90, it comes up and then goes on to the property. So from that edge there, where it's actually shown on the, on the, on the plan part. They're coming up, I don't think we'd even, you know, 50 feet just to wait, now would be not an issue, I don't think.
Yeah.
We're not going to go anywhere near that. I think a 50 foot.
If you go into the 100 foot, then that triggers.
Yes, yeah.
It does automatically trigger.
Yes.
To move.
They, they could put that requirement on there as well, yeah.
Okay. So I don't give a shit.
Yeah, I mean, on the screen, what, yeah, provided here, yeah, so I mean.
You make the condition of 50 feet?
You certainly can, it sounds like the applicant's mental-
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
And then if the Conservation Commission needs to rank them, they would do that.
And once they, once they go to 100 feet, conservation comes to the point, yeah.
Correct, yep, so yeah, for whatever reason, conservation that, 75 feet, you know, then, then they could make that determination. But this board could simply say, you know, we want, we want to preserve the natural environment and thus we can. 25 feet is the standard, but we want to double that to 50 feet and make that condition requirement. You know, and certainly they could speak with conservation about posting something, I don't know if there's trees or something to post.
Yeah. Well, they like, they like to put in the mark.
Right, yeah.
Put in the post, Tom Bellingham Conservation Markers.
Yeah, the yellow ones, I've got a bunch of those left.
The only thing I'm really concerned about is that literally comes out to that intersection. And Pine Street is crazy, Maple Street is crazy. And I know that, you know, there's only one more house I guess, but.
Yeah.
Well, the only, the only good thing about sight distance coming out there, because I've come out a few times myself, is that when you get there, you can definitely see down Maple Street, you know, cows coming at you. And, and you look to your left, when you're driving down, that whole area, you know, between Maple Street and that road, the guy used to cut the lawn, it's all grass.
I took the burn down, I took about 20 feet of the burn down, because my daughter's going to be there, so I might bring that back, cut that back at least another 25, 30.
Down by where that garage or whatever is, but that, what, is that going to be your house there?
Take a left out that garage.
Yeah.
And then there'll be, uh, my daughter, and then one in the back, so there'll be two there. So one back and to the right, one up on the, up on the roadway.
So when you get to that intersection, looking right down Pine Street, you got plenty of sight distance there. So it's not a dangerous intersection, but when I come out.
Left will be cut down, my grandson's in the car, but no, they will, my daughter. So that whole, that whole bank, I'm, I'm going to cut that right down. There won't be, there won't be anything there when you get there.
You still got to stop and watch, but sometimes, you know, people go down Maple Street pretty, pretty quick.
And then people taking a left.
Well, they, you know, it's like Pine Street's like a cut through street, you know, so when people come down Maple, because, you know, my guys were out on Maple Street working. I couldn't believe I was passing the.
It's that, that nine minute period, two times a day.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I can, I-
But you got to sit there and look, you know, you just can't wait.
Jim, is there any signage that can put there? Intersection ahead on?
Yeah, we can think about something underfoot there.
Let me put up a blind drive on the right side, so coming down Maple towards Hartford Ave. Because that's the worst out of the three shots, that would be the worst. So if I were to put something coming down Maple towards, towards Hartford Ave on the right, this is blind.
What we could do is, if Mr. Taylor would commit to that, I mean, we could work with the safety officer and come up with this language or something like that.
I think that'd be great, yeah, I think that, if you're coming out of that drive, that driveway.
Yeah.
The danger is somebody on Maple Street coming from your left. And not, and this part going, without necessarily seeing, because it is literally now, it was one of the teams, and now it has the side shoot.
Right, yeah, well, that, like, so that's the bank that I want to take out, on that left, on that side. So it's going to be black, there's not going to be that, that bank. Like I said, I took down about 15 to 20 feet there, and another 25 feet would be a blessing.
Whatever you think, I do have concerns about the exiting.
Yep.
At that, but whatever you decide to do.
Has a safety officer walked in?
I don't believe so, no.
Can you just, can you get his input on what can be done?
So.
We have no problem with any kind of signage, that's not a problem, not a problem, no.
Now, speaking of the safety officer. This is not technically a subdivision, correct?
No.
Well, it's a subdivision of land, but yeah, no, not like a typical.
Do they need a hammerhead for a fire truck or anything?
So, do you have a specification?
You have to put a temporary turnaround, protecting the Latino for gravel turnaround. Down right in, in the lots. Figured that someday that that road may be extended to other properties, so he said putting a temporary turnaround, so he has to announce, or fights like that, so they can turn around when they fall. And that means your rules and regulations was by our agreements.
And this will be paid.
50 and 35.
Except the part that unfortunately was for gravel.
Right, but this one ultimately, who's the person, but, but since it's just three. Yeah.
So we have, we have sewer on Maple Street stuff, the town had already scuffed it into the property. We have water, town water, so all these three lots are going to be serviced with sewer water.
When, would you hear the improvements to the road? I might have missed that.
Like, um, the better, you've got at least a binder down.
Like to get at least a binder down to 15.
Oh, okay. Before you occupy the house, but okay, yeah.
At least get something, at least a couple inches down there.
It's still, it's fine the way it is, actually. You know, scrape your foot down there, it's still, you'll pave it there.
Yeah.
It's just broken up.
Paved prior to occupancy, doesn't mean?
Yeah.
Dog lot.
Yes.
That's something prior.
This could be, I mean, I see a county road right now.
The county owns it.
The county already has one.
The county, the county owns it.
Does the county have to file it?
No, Don will have to go back to file it. He stopped doing it, because I already told him, you know, I'm down here by myself, we need a law. So Don stopped filing it, that used to be on my roof there.
That would be on your roof.
And he, yeah. So he'll probably have, definitely go back to filing it.
How long ago was it that they were filing it?
Oh, it's got to be 20 years, a good, yeah.
So Jim, what do you have so far?
So I have no activity within the 50 foot buffer on the, on the proposed lot. Posting of safety, traffic safety signage with the advice of the safety officer. Something to the effect of blind drive and paving of the, the road Oak Street prior to occupancy of the lot.
Can you, can you say the name of the owner?
There are two other owners that, because it does go all the way right to Franklin. But you can't, no one's going to build a bridge back or whatever, I don't think, because the bridge is gone about, that's why is this room about eight feet deep, two, this granite stations are still there for it, but that's gone. So up until the Franklin line, which is about halfway to the golf course. About half, to the halfway mark of the golf course.
Yeah.
You could, you could definitely do, yeah, you could definitely continue that and then take a right and come out on Maple Street if you want to.
Okay, so then, if that's a possibility, is it not something that we want to consider? In terms of additional traffic, it's going to be. This, this paper road could be coming real well, right, that we have to consider then?
Where are you referring to, you mean the road that's servicing this lot that they're considering right now?
Yeah, they're putting their hands, they're putting in their hands for the trouble.
Yeah.
But there's a potential for a cut through into Franklin.
No, it could never, would never happen. A, the wetlands come right up to the roadway, now they didn't in the day, but now the wetland, yeah, it comes right up, I don't think you could.
You know, you go past this land here, where these lots are, the, because the road goes straight, it springs off. And wetlands, like you said, once the bridge went down, probably back in the early 1900s, that whole area started to get flooded. So the wetlands past this property is right up to the road.
You know, right up, when you come off the last.
Right up to the trouble part?
No, no, past the.
Past that.
If you were to keep going through the, following that road, you're going to walk right into the wetlands.
Yeah, you can't go, you couldn't.
Because you don't.
No, A, I don't think Army Corps would let anybody do it, and conservation would be all over that, and you are, there is a river that runs, you know, along my brook. So you can't, you, you couldn't work around that, so I don't.
You literally have to build a bridge, a major bridge.
Then you couldn't service it for Franklin.
Yeah.
Is there any concession to go for it?
But you know what Oak Street and Franklin is?
If you, what kind of concession?
Oak and Pond.
What Oak Street is in Frank, you know, with the set of lights and pond, right?
Yeah, Oak and Pond, yeah.
If you were to turn around and look and see that road that goes to your right, that, that was Oak Street, that straight all the way through.
That's the other end of there.
Really, for that little road?
Yeah.
All the way through.
And there was a, there was a bridge there, you know, it was, you could travel it, you know?
It was for the mill, I was told, that they would bring their stuff from there up to the train station in Franklin. And it was a lot easier to jump than going down Pine and up and all the way. So the Metcalfs, actually, I did a lot of the research on the roadway part, they got the county to actually buy it. And put the road into their benefit.
Oh, I hope that.
So those two mills.
That's why the county didn't import.
Yes, yep.
Let me give you the other, would you mind a condition where there's no further extension of that road?
Sure. I would love to have one.
Yeah, that's fine with me, I don't mind, I don't own anything past it, so I don't, yeah.
No, we don't care.
Yeah, no, no development past my property.
Yeah, yeah, we have no problem with that.
I think the people in Maple Street would.
I went and talked to every neighbor, I know most of them are relatives and friends and so on, so I talked to everyone, showed them, and it was.
How long do you think it's been of being?
That Ernie told me it was the hurricane of '38 knocked the bridge out. And then since then, you know, his, his, his in-laws owned that before him, he was in there, and it was just them, it was just them down there, the two houses. And then someone had a camper that was living out there, because it was still a well and everything. You know, one of them, even though it wasn't else, it must have been out there years ago.
A lot of empty.
Oh, yeah, that neck of the woods, right there, yeah. There's quite, quite a bit.
You'd be amazed when you walk down there, because you can see, you can see, it's like, oh my God, this is a, you know, it's a big road at one time. Not like it's, it was a narrow, it was a.
It's got the leaves off and the hot top still there, it's broken up.
I think it was 50, it was wide, it was pretty, it was pretty big. You can see the cut right through the woods, all the way straight through.
You own that, you all own that.
Do I what?
You own the parcel.
Ernie's parcel, yeah.
Doesn't that like the walking?
It's, anybody can, it's a puppy, would make a gorgeous one of those, you know, I talked to the people from Met, Metac, Metacomet, I think it's called, or something, the Land Trust thing, and they do like nature conservatory trails, I mean, that's a county road, no one can tell, nobody, you can't walk down that or you can't go down. It's just like Oak Street, Pine Street, they're all public, public ways, but the, it's gorgeous out there, you want a big eagle's nest, and it's, it's a, it's a gorgeous, you know, it's a peaceful place to go and watch, they collect golf balls, hundreds of them, from the golf course, yeah. They make it down to the roadway once in a while. The good show, that's.
So Jim, I think what we need to do next, I'm seeing one, any of that, any questions?
Well, no, but when Brian was talking about putting in a situation that the road doesn't get connected, how does that mechanism work? As far as, it's a, it's a, the road's running right past it, right, more or less, and you can't, how do you, how does that mechanism work? Jim, is there, is there a, is there a mechanism that can be, like, if it was his property, I would say, you'd say you can't put the private road or up to 10 feet from the property, but that's not what this is.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, ultimately, in the, in the subdivision regs, you can only service three lots with essentially the spec that they're proposing to build to. You know, so maybe it's a, I was thinking about that front, that's where you guys are talking, and I think maybe it's something, phrase that condition where it's, you know, any, just one additional unit would require maybe a, a special permit or some, some mechanism where they would have to come back to this board. And you would expressly state that you, you know, this special permit was granted with the understanding that this road serves just the three units or some kind, something like that. It'll provide it out, so it's a special permit tonight, so I have to go back and draft the, if we move to a decision, I have to go back, draft the decision and the conditions, and then you guys get to take a look at it, so I can certainly bounce it off the town council.
Yeah. You can actually put something in there that says, if there was going to be further construction or further development, then what's there now? Would have to come up to current town, you know, stand, you know, as far as full road with drainage, curving, that kind of thing. You can put that in.
Right.
So then, what I like to do, any questions?
No, I think you guys can do it.
Russ?
Yeah, it's nothing that Grant bought, I think.
I'd like to have, I could say to launch, to have Jim draft a favorable decision with conditions.
Yep.
I can't make the vote, oh, yeah. Do I have a second? All in favor of drafting a favorable condition based on the outlines that have been articulated tonight and written down by, um, him, who's signified by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, did you ask the, did you ask a little question? You were talking about the safety officer.
Yes, that's one of the conditions.
That would be asked, so we're voting to have drafted, they're going to come back and we're going to get some input from the safety, safety officer before they pick a final vote.
Yeah, either, either way, I could do that, I could, we could probably do both, I could work it in the condition of.
I don't think they're going to have a problem with that at all.
No, no.
Yeah.
Like I said, I've got my daughter and friends, we'd be on that, coming out of there, so, no, we're going to make that as safe as possible.
Great, thank you. The science is for us, best part. All in favor, please, sing a line by saying aye.
Aye.
Hello?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
It's just a motion to continue to, up to, I mean, we could, I could have it ready for the 20 second Zoom, so if you're comfortable with that, you could certainly do that.
Does that work with your schedule, Bill?
For, so I could have a draft decision prepared for the board for the next meeting, which is October 22nd. It wouldn't be in person, though, because we have early voting this week. Otherwise, it would be November 12th in person.
Um, no, the sooner, definitely the better, yeah, I need to get the ground opened up. Definitely, sooner the better.
Well, if you guys are comfortable with that, I could have sort of the draft for you, we can consider it.
Because we'll just pick it up here later, we don't have to come in. Yeah, yeah, so that would.
Or you can put this thing in Zoom to see the vote.
Okay.
Because it will leave a decision that impacts you.
Yeah, yes.
They want to anticipate while you're Zooming.
Okay.
I don't think they're, I don't anticipate any, you know, wrinkles coming up.
Okay.
So that vote's passing, and we'll continue to our next meeting.
While we continue the hearing and build.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, sit in the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed with the man. Jim, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you by one thing, yeah, hopefully this thing, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Two weeks.
All right.
We're here, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so the board was like, I see, I believe I see Mr. Sean Malone present with Bellingham Shores, I don't know if you guys want to tackle that real quick, because they, Sean has requested a continuation of the jumper, well. If you would like to consider that, it would be out of order, but I know Mark Allen and his team have a, a little bit more of a presentation to provide us.
So the board wishes, do you want to move to, that was your board? Can you bring us up to the speech room?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we did have a number of items that needed to run through, Sean and I have been working on different, some different languages in terms of phasing, and also neighborhood character, that was another condition that the board had requested. We, we start working on some, we've been passing back some language, I don't think it's there quite yet. We're also pricing out the landscaping plan that was provided to us, and I think that's, oh, and you also have in your, in your package, peer review response that, let's give you a little more understanding of that clay core in the basin, and how, what kind of conditions we could discuss in the future. But I believe Sean is here tonight, requesting continuation of the report. That's correct.
That is correct, yes, thank you, Jim.
All in favor, George?
Yeah, I, I don't think I have anything further to offer other than what Jim just summarized there for us. But yes, we, we would like a continuance tonight to the, the November 12th hearing.
There's actually before.
If I may, real quick, I see there is at least one member of the public here, I don't know if they wish to offer any comments, I think, Jim.
Hi, no, I was just, I, I mean, I'll sit for the November, I'll come back for the number, November 12th. I sent, I just noticed today, I didn't hear back from Fafford. They asked me to send them, I got a phone call and they were asking, since the last meeting, they asked where I got my numbers on the pool and all that. So I told them that I Googled the, what we needed. And then, so what I did is I called Crystal Pools and I got a quote. I scanned it and I sent an email on September 17th, and unfortunately, the email that I sent, I just noticed today, because I haven't heard anything, I sent it to dot com instead of dot org, so I resent it today, copied the planning board, so I'm basically just waiting to hear from somebody. And the person's name, I didn't catch his first name, but it's L. Don is the email that I sent to, so I really have nothing, I mean, it was my fault, I did dot com instead of dot org. And like I said, I just noticed it today, because I've been checking my email and haven't received anything, so that's all that I have. And really, nobody's come, nobody's come to look at the pool, so we're, we're closing it, I mean, so.
I've asked you to reach out to them for maybe a. Or do you remember the call?
Oh, I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
You're a little muffled, Bill.
I'm sorry?
You're a little muffled, but I will reach out.
I asked them to reach out to November, and then reach out to you before a meeting in November 12th.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My pleasure.
I appreciate it.
You're sorry? You could probably move it like.
That's a different mic.
Oh, the different mic.
That might. Hot mics everywhere, no, they'd be in mine, I think Ray got us. Anyways, you continued, sorry to interrupt, you've, the second, we're continuing.
All in favor of the continuation is signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes, you lose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Jim, what is next in our?
All right, so yes, we've skipped around a little bit, we figured, you know, Mark Allen, he has nothing better to do, so let's put it at the end there. So yes, on your agenda tonight, you have Brendel and Charles. I, I think you guys are well familiar with this project at this point. Some updates since the last time we met, we engaged the peer review, the peer review has initiated their response, and you have three letters in your package. There, they are divided up nicely actually for us in terms of discussion purposes. One involves the review of the notice of intent, so that's really more so for conservation, but it has a lot of good insight for, for us as well. Another involves the more overall peer review, which really touches on the drainage and the grading. And that has a little bit of a ways to go, I know Mark Allen and his team are working diligently and they, they, I believe they expect to have a revised plan set for us to consider at the November meeting. And then lastly, you have a transportation peer review, and I think that's going to be the, the crux of the conversation tonight. I, I see Ron Mueller, their transportation engineer on, on the line as well. So this one, I think, if you have moments to pull out, would be handy. I will note, and not to steal too much of Mark Allen's thunder here, but just a caveat with this peer review is that, if you all recall, we, this, this property was part of a larger property that included Lincoln property. When the state did their meet or review, their, their overall review of the site, they cited a number of traffic related items that needed to get addressed. Fortunate, I guess, for this applicant, this board has required Lincoln to do all of those things, so, so this applicant, you know, more or less is, doesn't need to, or isn't addressing those, because Lincoln is already addressing them. Things specifically like the road safety audit over at Mill Street, which I think we'll get more to. But so we've studied that intersection already, and that was done on behalf of Lincoln already. So our peer review, you know, they didn't have that decision, so therefore they didn't know and they didn't include any of this. So really, you know, the crux of the review involved looking at the volumes and the safety standards. And, and we're in pretty good working order there, I think, you know, this board tonight, if we could, provide some guidance and some definitive input in terms of the Mill Street intersection, any other input you may have in terms of. uh, provide some guidance and some definitive input in terms of the Mill Street intersection, any other input you may have in terms of, uh, the neighborhood character and, uh, and way which the roads are laid out. So, you know, as, as you guys stated, it's fairly pedestrian friendly down the overlay. And, uh, and, you know, making sure that we're progressing both with both lights really south side of life and, uh, over on 140. Hand off to Mark and.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jim. Thanks for that intro. And, uh, yeah. So what we're here tonight to do is basically give you an update. Let you know that we've, uh, received the correspondence that Jim indicated from, uh, BSC group out of Worcester. And we are working diligently to go through all three review letters. Basically, we call them civil, environmental and traffic. And, uh, we're targeting, uh, October 29th to have a new set, um, of plans for both boards. So, uh, we are, we have Ron Mueller here tonight to, to go through the traffic, uh, part of those three reviews. And as Jim indicated, a lot of those are sort of not applicable because this residential portion, uh, isn't responsible for the, the, the mass DOT intersection signalization and, and alignment of the new intersection off of Mechanic Street. So what we'd like to do tonight is just have Ron go through his responses, uh, quickly to those, uh, BSC traffic comments. And then focus on, um, what we're doing on Mill Street, uh, as it comes up to Route 126. Just to refresh the board for your memory as to, as to how we're gonna, uh, bring in Common Street Serpentine connection. And then what we're doing at the, the Mill Street intersection with 126. So I'd like to let Ron just kind of run through, uh, the, the memo that he prepared.
Thanks, Mark. Um, for the record, Ron Mueller, the principal of Ron Mueller and Associates and the traffic consultant on the project. Um, so, uh, Mark, quick question. Did the response letter that I prepared, uh, since sent out last night to you, did that get submitted to the board?
I had not forwarded it. No, I'm sorry, Ron.
Okay. No, not a problem. Not a problem. I was just wondering if that, if the board had that in hand, but obviously we're going to submit that shortly.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's fair to say that BSC's review, uh, essentially agreed with, um, the vast majority of the traffic study and the assumptions and methodology that we prepared. Uh, they really focused it on four areas where they required or wanted some additional information. Uh, the first has to do with sight lines at that, uh, new intersection driveway. Uh, they mentioned that Route 140 has some horizontal and vertical alignment, uh, both east and west of this intersection. Where, uh, they, Rick, they suggested to enhance, uh, motorist awareness of new, of the new intersection that we install, uh, intersection that head signs, uh, both eastbound and westbound approaches. Um, where our office is actually preparing the construction documents right now. That's going to be submitted to the mass DOT in the town very shortly. Is part of the Curtis apartment project. Um, I'm sure this board is aware, actually you may not be because that was a zoning board that approved that project, but, um, we are doing some additional improvements above and beyond, uh, what Lincoln Properties warehouse development is doing there. Um, creation of a, uh, left turn lane in the westbound direction. Um, and additional widening of Route 140 to create a shared use pedestrian bicycle path there. So we have not yet submitted those plans to DOT. We will be doing that shortly. And as part of that, we can easily incorporate those signs requested by BSC. Um, they also recommended, um, that we, at the time we prepared the traffic study for the Red Mill and Charles project. Uh, the Curtis development was not yet proposed, so we did not incorporate that into that traffic study. Um, and BSC requested that we rerun the analysis, basically including the Curtis apartment development for all the study area intersections. Um, we've essentially done that as part of the traffic study that I prepared for the Curtis apartment project. So all of that information the board has, uh, and, uh, I'm assuming, uh, BSC has as well because they referenced the study in their review. Uh, so all of that information is readily available, uh, and has been already done. The third thing they requested is, how the new connector road that's being proposed between Mill Street and Common Street, how that might redistribute some general traffic that exists along Mill Street today. Uh, again, that, all of that analysis was done as part of the Curtis apartment project. Is that project assumed not only completion of the Lincoln warehouse project, uh, the Red Mills and the Charles project, um, and various other developments, but also all of the improvements that are being proposed as a result of all of these projects, including the town center improvement project, which was another question that, you know, BSC had. Um, and the final thing that they commented on is, uh, they requested that we perform a traffic signal warrant analysis at that Route 140 driveway in this section. Uh, now that is something that I believe the HB is currently working on. The, and, and there's some discussions with DOT about, uh, whether or not a signal can be installed there. And I had, we've tried to reach out to BHB prior to this meeting. We're unable to connect with them. But we did do our own signal warrant analysis there. And, uh, again, assuming, uh, completion of the warehouse project, assuming completion of the red, uh, Red Mills on the Charles project, uh, and assuming completion of the Curtis apartment project. And what we found is, one, the way traffic signal warrants work is you have to meet a certain minimum volume threshold. And that threshold, uh, is a combination of the main line, Route 140 traffic and the higher of the two minus street, uh, volumes. In this particular case, that is by far the warehouse and Red Mills on the Charles project. The, the Curtis apartment project will generate about 50 or 60% of the traffic that the other driveway will. Uh, again, once all of those projects are completed. So what we found is that while the minimum vehicular volume warrant that mass DOT, DOT typically looks to, uh, meet in order to allow installation of signal, that warrant is not met. But what is met is what's called the interruption of continuous traffic wa- warrant. Uh, what that essentially means is that there's, uh, a substantial amount of traffic on the main line on Route 140 that it warrants to break up that flow of traffic to create platoning to allow other nearby driveways and intersecting streets to access onto 140, including obviously then the location where the signal is installed. So that warrant is met based on our analysis. Uh, so I do believe that the HB probably has some very good, um, information to convince DOT to allow, uh, the installation of a signal there. Obviously it will not happen, uh, immediately because, like I said, those projects have to be completed before you will meet those warrants. But, um, we do believe that, uh, there is justification to allow a signal in the future. Uh, so the final thing I'd like to touch on is, uh, my recommendations regarding Mill Street and the creation of this new connector road. Jim, is there any way that I can share the screen?
Yep, you have the ability.
Okay, perfect. So can you all see this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, um, a couple of things. First of all, um, so this is the Mill Street intersection with Route, with, uh, North Main Street, Route 126. Uh, what I'm recommending here, uh, because of the creation of the new connector road, that we eliminate left turns from Mill Street onto, onto 126. And that is very easily done by installing a no left turn sign across the street from Mill Street. Um, and I am also recommending a pavement arrow that says right turn only there. Uh, I do believe, I don't believe, uh, we should eliminate left turns into Mill Street. Because doing so, first of all, that movement is not a critical movement. Um, there, um, it, it, it doesn't have any capacity constraints or sight distance constraints. Um, but if we prohibited that movement, the only way traffic could get onto Mill Street and not just from the red, uh, Red Mill on the Charles project, but all existing Mill Street businesses as well. The only way they could access their businesses is to go through two, uh, traffic signals, uh, and then make a left onto Common Street and come in that way. Uh, in my mind, that is sort of a, you know, why send them through there when they can easily make that movement with plenty of capacity right at, uh, where they're doing it today? And then moving, uh, to the east, um, recommending that we add obviously a stop sign because this new connector road will now be the main road with Mill Street. So we had a stop sign on the Mill Street eastbound approach, uh, as well as a stop ahead sign to really reinforce that because it's a condition that does not exist today. Uh, and then also to add some directional signing, wayfinding signing, uh, on the Mill Street westbound approach, uh, directing people to go to Route 126 north, keep going straight, uh, to 126 south or 140. Uh, stay on this connector road and access the signal at common and 140. That is all I have.
Um, real quick, uh, before you leave that, that page there. So are you giving priority to the common streets right there at that intersection?
That's correct. Yep.
Well, so you, the people on Mill Street would come down and stop for, yeah. Why, why would, uh, what's the reason behind that? Uh, the, you know.
I understand, Mark and Charman, if you, if you have input on this, but I understand that was a comment by, uh, Thomas Janik.
Uh, yeah, I think Don DiMartino at the time, uh, mentioned that he would like this, uh, common street to be the main sweeping street just because he foresaw a little more volume, uh, on that road. And because it's coming from the signal, that that should be the predominantly, uh, the, the main street as opposed to Mill Street. Mill Street will only see basically the traffic associated with those few businesses, uh, that go down there. So that was, that was the reasoning behind it.
Quite honestly, from a traffic operations perspective, it could go either way. Um, that you don't have enough traffic on this, on either of these roads or at this intersection, uh, to create a problem one way or the other.
Yeah, if you recall, um, Jim and Ron, we initially proposed a T intersection there. And that's when Don DiMartino, uh, kind of pushed for this sort of sweeping curve to make Common Street the, the main, the main thoroughfare.
Yep. Yeah, I, I do recall that conversation. It's just, uh, in my, my mind, it definitely, I, you know, I'll leave it to the traffic engineers, but, uh, coming down Common Street, I, I personally, I envisioned, uh, maybe a yield or maybe a stop sign on Common, but I, 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 I like the, the sweeping motion that it, that you're right, and that's probably the primary. So let's make that move, uh, smoothly. But yeah, this, the, the stop sign copy, I'm fair, but I'll,
So if the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So for the, if you're on 140, you're going to take a left into Mill Street. Um, yeah, if I was coming on 140 towards the center of the town common, I mean, uh, where we are now. You know, I wanted to take a left onto Mill Street, go down that road. You, you kind of have to do that, um, sort of immediately before an intersection. Wouldn't it make more sense for the, for those people to go through the next two lights and take a left and then go on to that road behind the new road that comes behind the meeting room? And then, um, then they can sort of exit out and take a right onto, out of Mill Street, back onto 140 if they wanted to go back that way. And I can tell you, my concern, my concern is that if there, and I, I would imagine there'd be more, there's not a lot of people now that take left on 140 on Mill Street. But once we allow this access to this subdivision, I would imagine that there would be more. And that when somebody does take a left, particularly at a peak time, they kind of take their life in their own hands. But they're also stopping traffic that is pretty backed up under normal conditions. And all, so it's, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if there should be no.
You're, you're absolutely correct that, um, there, I mean, there is very little traffic that makes a left onto Mill Street there today. Uh, there obviously will, will be more with this project, although, uh, not significantly. Um, and you could send that, you could restrict left turns onto Mill Street there and send them through the two extra signals to get back onto Common Street and eventually Mill Street. It's not going to have a huge impact on the operations of those signals. Uh, but we all know that those two intersections right now, um, do have capacity constraints. There are improvements, uh, proposed, obviously, that will address a lot of those concerns. Uh, so sending more traffic through those signals shouldn't be, uh, significantly impacting the operations. Um, my thought was that because we're not talking a lot about a lot of traffic, uh, that allowing them to make the turns where they make them today, um, will not create, uh, a dangerous situation or, uh, I mean, there is plenty of sight distance. You have plenty of gaps in traffic because this, because of the signal, you know, that creates these gaps. So that was my recommendation.
Yeah. And to that point though, so the more I'm looking at it, and again, uh, maybe we think about it a little bit more, but if we restricted that left turn onto Ming, uh, Mill Street, I'm thinking practically around the driver.
During certain hours or?
Or, and in general, if we restricted it, if you're coming down North Main, you're going to take a left on the bill. It's the size. If you knew that sign said no left turn on Mill, I'm taking a left at the BQ and I'm going to cut through the plaza and go onto Mill Street. You know, and I'm, I'm just thinking practically, or if I live there, that's what I'm doing every single time. And, uh, you know, so I don't know, maybe, uh, I don't. I don't disagree with that. People will find the quickest route, but my thinking is that there will be increased regular cars going down that road wanting to take a left. But there's also trucks that currently do that. And there would be trucks, there isn't the, the, the businesses on it. And you don't want, I don't think we want trucks to do that, um, particularly if there's more traffic. And I, I, there's probably no problem now, but I see people trying to do it. And it's crazy. I, I have that concern. And I, and I do think that, um, Mill Street won't be used primarily for the businesses. It, it will be used as part of the, of, as a way of cutting off.
Jim, what if we did this? What if we looked at a series of hours that you couldn't take a left turn onto Mill Street?
Yeah, I, I would say it's, that's really, really, uh, from my other signage, it's really difficult to enforce and maintain. People are going to do it. I would say it's a hard, you do it one way or the other. That's my recommendation. I mean, looking at different, different commercial entities that we have that with, and I don't know, it's probably more often than not that I see them going the, in the wrong way than opposed, opposed to the sign.
What if we just said, well, again, it's probably very similar. What if we limited Mill Street to business access only?
So there would be no. Well, the town would. Well, uh, you know, it depends on who you're talking to down. I mean, you, I think D W wanted to close it off altogether. Uh, uh, I think we rolled with preferring the no left either way. Um, no left, that was no left or no right. Uh, yeah, left, yeah, no left, no left. So, uh, yeah, I think in all different ways, you kind of, it's a difficult intersection. I think everyone just, you know, realizes that. And that's why Common, Common Street is, is existing as a main road now because Mill Street is a bad intersection. So let's try and divert a lot of traffic or whatever.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should add a problem. No, that's the last thing we wanted to do, especially between the hours of 4:07.
So what's the advantage of connecting Mill Street to the new road? Connecting the most, well, it's not really connecting Mill Street. Mill Street happens to be there. It's connecting the subdivision to the new road, right?
Right, but it, it, it comes with, there, there was a decision made that let's connect it to the.
Uh, because my understanding, and Ron, you might be able to talk to him more, but I mean, the connectivity of, of making it, making this through road of the neighborhood to Mill Street was, uh, because it's, it's, one, it's there and two, I think it's, and I don't want to speak for it, but I, I believe it's a grading and all that stuff. I mean, otherwise there's some significant grade challenges if you went over behind Walgreens and some of that and connected that way.
I don't know if you guys can speak to that.
I mean, Mark, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, I mean, I just thought that the connection to Mill Street was always. A a recommendation by the town.
Yeah, they wanted from what the history was, was you have to have the. Mill Mill Street open to the the two residences and the and the handful of businesses that are on it. So you can't, you can't shut it off with the common street access only, so leaving it open was, you know, part of the DPW's plan from the beginning. At to Ron's point. The the addition of the left turn in, basically, although we were all in agreement that it may add a few more trips for the residents. Residences, it eliminates a few trips going through the two signals, so I think it's a net benefit from what I'm hearing from Ron. Is although although. You know, you you do increase traffic a hair from people coming south on 126. That may use that to uh to come down the street and and just get into their 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 the new subdivision. People obviously come from 495, but have two other options. So it's basically a very small amount of residential traffic that that left in will take. I think it's more detrimental to to not allow that and and it just increase the numbers going through two it two signals to do so, so. The right in right out was talked about at length with DPW, but. To Ron's point, you know, I think we got to make that valid point to where you're subtracting. Numbers at the two intersections by allowing that or continue continuing to allow that that left turn in. And to Jim's point too, it's it's going to be so easy just to cheat and cut through the plaza. And that's something nobody wants, just for for turning movements.
Well, regardless of what we. People will still cut through the plaza. I disagree with your premise. On the impact of adding additional vehicles. It'll be more than additional vehicles. And right now, you can disrupt the traffic flow. For the southern half, now actually grappling. From the center of town down south. All those residents will be impacted. More significantly than those living in that development. So for the sake of worst case scenario. We're looking at the total buildout. Is 118 homes. So let me double, let me just say that's. Let's say. In an evening. For the benefit of those people taking a left, you're gonna impact thousands of people trying to get home every night. I think that's one thing we've always wanted to avoid. Jim, you're can. My out of why, I don't think I am.
No, no.
So if I could just for a little bit of piece of additional information. I'm just looking at a traffic study and we're talking about 12 total with the. New residential project, a total of 12 vehicles making a left turn during the morning peak hour. And a total of 29 vehicles making those turns during that turn during the PMP hour, so.
So if I'm right, if I'm hearing you right, then Ron, those 12 vehicles will not have to add to the congestion of the two lights where they can. Simply sort of cut off early, go down Mill Street and not interfere with the 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 thousands of current residents that the chairman is speaking to.
That's correct, exactly.
But isn't the bigger issue with the traffic? From the lights backs up past the plaza sometimes, so it's all, it's all sort of commingled, it's not. As if that left hand turn is so far from the light, it won't be impacted because there's cars all the way. That passed the plaza already.
So, so yeah, we're not, we're not talking about left hand turns coming out of Mill Street, that will still be prohibited. It's the people traveling south from 126 coming into Mill Street.
Yes.
Right.
Let me give you my experience, I live in South Berlin. You come down that street and it's preform. Although you have a turning lane at the the center of town to go left. Oftentimes, you see a person in the left hand lane. Starting to go left and then cutting across in front of town hall to go right. Adding traffic behind that to take left on the Mill Street is just gonna. Back this up even more. Your numbers mentioned. If I remember correctly, 29 cars turning into Mill Street.
Correct, making a left turn.
Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Can you imagine being behind you with three of those cars? Trying to go there left. You're gonna create the massive. Delay in the lights and we're trying to computerize those lines here. And just add significantly to the traffic for people trying to get home coming up 495.
Correct, I mean, there obviously is the the chance that. If you're sitting there making a left turn, waiting for a gap in traffic and northbound 126 traffic. That you're gonna start stacking up traffic behind you, that is absolutely. The possibility.
Things are real, not a possibility.
Well, right. It's it's either that or you send those 29 cars through two most signals. That are already have capacity constraints.
I would rather do that than have somebody really willing. That they're, you know. I'm gonna do that.
Well, I don't mean to be abrasive. Where where you're. Elected by the residents of Berlin. And we're talking about the benefits of residents. In development that has yet to be approved. And we're talking about 29 potential vehicles. As opposed to thousands of people trying to get home every night. No deference to development. I'm siding with the majority of the people trying to go home as opposed to 29 people. So the that that's where I'm coming. You know, we 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 live here, we see this every night.
No, I understand.
It's nice for people to, you know, look at numbers and do traffic studies. But, um, you know, sit in that traffic some nights. You know, it it goes beyond the plaza. So I think it's, I'm concerned it needs to be addressed.
I mean, I can only give you what is my recommendation based on the analysis that we've performed and the volume projections that we've made. And my recommendation is to allow left turns there because it is the better solution. Even if it may back up traffic or will back up traffic behind them occasionally, than sending them through two extra signals. That, I mean, it's your decision ultimately, but that is my recommendation.
So I would, if I may make reference, it sounds like the board is leaning towards no left turn on the Mill Street. Um, I would say, I mean, if you want to pencil that in for now and if you want to return that, we can, but. Perhaps it's moving forward with it being no left turn. I mean, that's.
Well, I want, let's ask everyone what they're opinion.
Yeah, if we could pull the board, we'd like to make a general revision to the site plans to work with Ron Mueller to kind of. Get you a revised set by the end of the month, so yeah, if we if we could pull the board and see what their the general consensus is, that would be a huge move forward.
So taking a left in the Mill Street, there's there's no room for for two cars to be parallel there, so it's gonna stop traffic. I don't see it either, I think it's actually extremely dangerous on the other side coming across, so. I would agree with the chairman and the vice chairman on this, that's not optimal.
Yeah, I I agree, I think it'll be difficult to manage. Taking a left turn there unless maybe they can retime the lights or. If there's something else out, but I'm leaning towards no left.
Dennis, yeah, that would be the key would be if you could get the red light there enough so then to safely take that left. Or if you're gonna sit there. As long as that traffic going by you and you're gonna queue up the rest of them in the back. To me, that you stay queued in a straight line, it's a little safer.
I still think computerizing the lights, not reading the lights, it's not gonna.
That's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna impact it for now. Is Russ still up there?
I would say while difficult to take a left there, I am concerned about the business owners there.
I can, I can speak to a little bit of that, I spoke to every business owner there, but I have spoken to at least three of them now. And and they they haven't expressed any concerns about it, they actually. Appreciate the fact that there's gonna be, I think they're more appreciative of the. The town center intersection improvements and this connecting road. But that's not to say there, there might not be one or two other businesses out there that may have a concern about it.
Right, I mean, I certainly understand the difficulty of taking a left there, I live right. Off of 126 over there, just past Dairy Queen, so I know, I'm very familiar with the traffic, so. So anyway, just concerned about the business owners, that's all.
I I don't want to ignore them.
If anything, it kind of makes your life a little easier, you're gonna pick the strap out of gold there. Because you know, I can't do this crazy move, I gotta go. Less than 100 feet, take a left and go back around and come the other way, it's not like it's three miles out of the way.
Russ, I I think what may happen over time. Is let's assume this does go in in the in place. Those businesses, people going there will learn how to navigate around them pretty quickly.
Oh, yeah, I I I get it, you know, people are gonna take the path of least resistance or the or the one they think is, so.
Yes.
I I agree with that as well.
I think we should, you know, next, move on to another, any other discussion points?
So I I think you you heard the board, guys.
Yeah.
One other thing before we go too far from Mill Street, I don't know, Ron, if you have the turnaround for the end of Mill Street, you could. Show the board or or if that's Mark, I don't know.
No, we we had sent you that sketch, Jim, I don't know if Ron had seen that. It's basically, it's basically sort of a. A quasi cul-de-sac at the end of Mill Street because some of the the business owners have very difficult turning movements. For their, you know, larger cube trucks at the end to do a 27 point turn, if you will. So we're we're, we've been working with Jim and the DPW just to sort of get a preliminary sign off on doing sort of a a quasi cul-de-sac. At the end of Mill Street, just so that they can turn around adequately at the end as opposed to. Taking a a multi-point turn, which would slow down any traffic going on down there, so. Yeah, we 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 sketched that out, we think it's gonna work for for all turning trucks as far as the radius goes, so. I don't think Ron's seen that, and I don't know if she forwarded that to the board.
Oh, yeah, so this is kind of a request from the business community there. Right now, I think I maybe I mentioned at a previous meeting, there's not a lot of traffic in terms of trucks, but. An occasional truck will come down there daily and right now, because it's only, I think, five businesses. They all just park their single truck in the middle of the road, they all know it's it's gonna be there and you just kind of let it be and. And move on and they slowly turn around and get out. But we asked if Mark and his team could look at a small cul-de-sac at the end of Mill Street. Right away, that would allow for those vehicles to make a proper turn.
Like a hammerhead.
It's a, it's a slightly larger circle everywhere there trucked to get around there, so. He sent over a sketch and a toss over DPW everyone, give it a thumbs up in terms of, you know, adequacy, so. So make sure it gets onto the plan set for you guys.
Yeah, it'll it'll be part of the next revision set that we're preparing right now. That addresses all the civil concerns, all the wetland concerns, and then all these traffic comments that are coming tonight, so you'll see that at at the end of the month.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
Um, yeah, so in terms of the flavor.
Flavor of the development.
Yeah, in terms of, yeah, the neighborhood card, I think I think you guys touched on this quite a bit, I don't know, Mark, if you have. If you wanted to run down the street one more time, just showing them, you know, the the key things there was. And what we stressed with the state honestly is bike connections, pedestrian connection, which is, you have both of. And and any kind of favorite features that I know the board has been talking about, I believe there was that one time talk of. Median or two in there or just a tightening of. Of the sidewalks in certain areas and at crosswalks perhaps maybe slight bump outs, those types of things to give it a little bit of. Character that the board has been looking at.
Yeah, so we have, we have incorporated those items on the plans that you that you do have before you now. We do have two median strips, sort of breaks in the landscape, if you will, kind of center island, they're not long, they're not too involved. But it does give that sort of break. We have incorporated other residential breaks throughout the project, just so it doesn't look like. You know, house after house after house, we do know that the lots are small, but we have added. Multiple different types of architectural layouts in addition to the sweeping curves, the vertical curves. And these breaks in development, so. I I think those those components are gonna be key to keeping this development, you know, sort of special, you know, downtown residential overlay district where. Although smaller lots, it's done in a tasteful way. One of the, one of the items that we have on the plans before you tonight is, or it shows some passive recreation. Off of Road D, if you will, and I don't want to get into the the plan set too deep, but. Would like to get a little bit of feedback because that is a break in in the residential development. If if that's something that the town would like to perceive pursued or maybe eliminated as far as. As as a as a town park, similar to Macy Estates, where it's just sort of open passive recreation area. And and maybe you might want to see it just revegetated with with natural growth, it's it's something that we currently show as a as a passive recreation area. But if if the board seems to think that you don't need that in town. Then we could just sort of keep it as a woodland area.
Can you bring it up on, if Mark, you have plans you can bring up for?
Uh, not being at the office, I don't, Jim, I apologize.
Okay, you're okay, we'll discuss it at the next meeting then.
Yeah, totally fine. Yeah.
I just. Quick question, if I can, when you say passive recreation area, I just want to make sure that I'm. Completely clear on what that is, it's just essentially a a park, small park type of area that's grassed over, is that?
Correct, yeah, just sort of a, it's a half an acre of dedicated space to be maintained as sort of lawn area. So that you can throw the frisbee around, you know, throw the ball around, there's no, there's no jungle gym, there's no, there's no tennis courts, there's no. Ball fields, but just an open grassy field to to bring the dog down to that type of passive recreation, they call it.
Thank you.
So we'll we'll keep it earmarked as passive recreation and we'll just kind of go through it at the next, at the next hearing.
That'd be fine.
The last thing I just have, this has almost, almost a note just for everyone, and Mark and I have been talking quite a bit. So at the end of Mill Street there, there is a. Is a mailbox bank, an island where there's mailboxes for the subdivision. I brought it up as, I thought it was odd that there was, that it would be there, given that it's, you know, not a natureway or anything like that, it's just a. Subdivision, my understanding is the postmaster directed it in that regard. I I I've seen them do that in the past, lots of issues with the post office. Given the recent issues with the post office, I was unable to make much progress. But but I I I'm interested, I don't know your guys' thoughts, but. I I would be more interested in seeing individual mailboxes than you put in this house, it doesn't make sense to me that you would drive to. The other side of a subdivision to get them in.
Parking.
They all, they have left a small area for you to pull over and grab your mail, but. But it, I mean.
118.
Yeah, 118 simple family homes would be, you know, I think they're essentially. Yeah, exactly, and who, so my, that was what I brought up, who's filing that and who's being taken to the mailboxes?
What happens if the mail doesn't fit? It just goes back to the post office?
Probably asleep on the ground. Yeah, just seemed odd to me, so it sounds like you guys are in agreement, so I'll I'll keep pursuing that. Maybe you have more time. Okay. Yeah, exactly. So so I think, Mark, I think you guys, because of your review and some of the guidance tonight, I think. You guys have a lot, some homework to do, but you've been prepared for, I think you guys. you guys have a lot, some homework to do, but you will be prepared for, I think you guys meeting November 12th, right?
Yeah, that would, that would be great. Yeah, we, we anticipate a planned set revision coming out before the next conservation meeting on the 28th. So, yeah, November 12th would be great.
That's fine. Do you need a motion?
I just, one thing. One thing, Mark. The more trees and, and character even gives the plan better.
Yeah, note, note taken and sent to the developers and we do not anticipate reducing the number of trees just for the sheer fact that there are so many driveways. We just, we can't technically meet the subdivision rules and regs for every 40 feet on center. Whereas if you had a two-acre lot, that would be very easy to do, but these are, you know, quarter acre lots. So we, we just ask for a little relief to just give us the flexibility to plant trees. Maybe not exactly at 40, maybe some are 30, some are 70. So, yeah, they, they definitely plan on putting in all the trees, utilizing little landscape islands, breaks in development, center islands. And the, the character of the architecture is really gonna, I think, really gonna sing for this development.
Thank you. Chairman, thank you. Need a motion? And continues to November 12th. I have a second. Continue to November 12th. All in favor of continuing the public hearing to November 12th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passage in hands.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
I appreciate your flexibility on the schedule this evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Jim, what's next? So on the agenda, we have Monique and Corinne's reading acceptance. My recommendation is not to make, or not, no action at this time. We're still reviewing those screens. There is some slight graining issues with swells and some other stuff that we just need to get refined. So we've asked them to do that prior to a formal recommendation. So I, I would say they should have that ready for us by the 22nd, but I have an updated book for you at that point. Same thing with town meeting warrants. If we could, 22nd is rather light agenda. Just reviewing the decision of the back lot and then opening that mulch, but hopefully continuing. So if you want to, I know you have a copy of the warrant anywhere, but, you know, copy of the warrant. You have some time to take a look at it. If there's any questions or anything you guys want to make a recommendation on, let me know. At the next meeting, certainly to make those recommendations. No A and R's tonight. You do have one set of minutes for September 10th and no left turn.
We all change to approve the minutes in the September meeting. Anyone have any comments? Addition, deletion? Our motion to approve the minutes of the September meeting. All in favor of approving the minutes from the September meeting? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passage in hands.
We've only, we've got one thing. Tim, are those guns on your wall? I'm gonna go with probably.
Where? On the back? No, no. Those are, I'll turn it on for you.
All right, that's all.
I maintain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor of adjournment? Motion passage. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I want to thank the public and the participants. Thank you.